This to the middle after listening to some of the audios.
Okay. It's already recording.
Okay, we're gonna start our meeting. It's, uh, this is the town of Sangerville, Board of Selecting Meeting, Wednesday, February 6th, 2019. And I've got 5:02. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, onto item two, approval of the January 23rd, 2019 minutes.
Make motion to approve the minutes. January 23rd minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? None? Vote? Three? They are approved. Uh, item three, review of the treasurer's warrants payroll six and seven, accounts payable number eight.
Make a motion to approve A and B as read.
Second.
Those in favor? Three? Uh, item four, hold the business solid waste.
And Jack and Joe from Dover are here, so we have many questions to ask them directly. Uh, I've given you a bunch of paperwork. This one is our budget from 18, this is our proposed 19. These are the two, there's an email from Jack with the dollar amount, there's a letter from Dexter with their dollar. Um, and then there's the contracts. We have two with Dexter and a sample of the, I mean, two with Dover and sample of Dexter's with Greford.
And there's two contracts with, for Dover because, or what?
Oh, they're different.
Oh.
One is demolition debris and one is waste disposal.
Okay.
And I forwarded you, I meant to print it off, I can go do that if you need to, the lists of pricing and so that if you wanted to compare. But I did forward it.
Yeah.
Dover's and Dexter's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, uh, I called, um, well, they're, they're, uh, uh, Bolsters, because they happen to pick up my trash. And I asked them if there was gonna be any impact to people who use their service in Sangerville versus, and she said no. The only thing that might change if you made that change would be the day. It's possible, depending on where you, what you're out on, you could have a different day. So, but in terms of costs, she didn't expect any impact to the residents.
I would assume Trashbusters is the same? We don't know.
I didn't call them.
I mean.
Uh, but I can't imagine why it would be different.
Right.
So has, has, have any of you totally quantified the savings?
No.
What do you estimate, Lee Vos?
Um, you take it into account that we won't get back the 3,400. Um, it's just under 10,000. So we're budgeted here for, um, 105, 750. And Dexter is giving us a price of 95. 95.5, I think. 95.522. And that's, um...
Okay, Lois, sorry. Where's the 105? Where?
It's on the proposed, on our budget that we've proposed.
Okay, uh, what do I see?
106, six.
Yeah.
Well, we've got to pay Pattersons and Trashbusters.
Okay, okay, so that's a sub total.
Yeah, so just 105. Yeah, 105, 750.
Is that final line? Okay. Okay.
And then this is the, down here. No, it is about 10,000, because if you read this, it says, "This cost is an estimate based on the town's waste reported from MRC, minus your rebate equaling $71 a ton and estimates on wooden demolition debris." So, minus your rebate, that, I'm assuming that, that's already taken that rebate into calculation.
I'm just, in the terms of the agreement, it actually looks less onerous in terms of getting out of it. Looks like it's a six-month written notice.
The Guilford one, I mean, the Dexter one?
Yeah, which is a copy, assuming we would have the same agreement that Guilford got.
And did, uh, did Dexter solid waste supplies to you, Lois, or did you just get this from Guilford? Oh, they said this is a, a sample.
Mm-hmm.
So, the difference is?
10 grand.
10.
That's the way I'm reading it.
Mm-hmm.
Dexter, though, is gonna charge you, the resident, a $5 sticker every year.
We, we could buy the stickers and we could, we could hand them out with registrations. That's what they do in the town of Dexter. So when you go to register your vehicle, if you want one, they give it to you.
Right. And they do a different color every year, and I think you do a different color every year? But we don't, for some reason, we don't have a different color every year, we just give them the same one all the time.
The cost of the stickers is 50 cents a piece?
Yeah.
For, for the town to buy from Dexter.
Correct. In some towns actually charge it.
Oh, so they have to charge it?
They upscale, yeah.
Yeah.
But you don't have to.
Right. Right. So by a roll of them?
Yeah. I mean...
Right.
I, I would think, uh, basically you want one for every household potentially.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And as far as comparing what we, the services at each facility, we determine?
Well, I think that's all the same, except you have the pesticide.
Which they'll, which they'll have to start doing. Household hazardous waste, yeah.
Who will have to do? Dexter?
It's very expensive, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause coastal, the new places will not, will not be in their trash, they don't want that stuff.
Right. What's considered house hazardous waste, household hazardous waste or pesticide or?
Pesticides, all detergents and tars and adhesives and blues and spray paint, uh, any cleaning material.
Yeah.
Old gas, any freeze.
So right now, Joe, we bring it and, and you just take it, and there's no additional charge for taking all of that? Or you just?
No, we have disposal fees on household hazardous, except for paint, you know, latex and that type of...
So, and right now Dexter doesn't take any, does not take any of those?
No. It goes in the trash.
Oh, 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 oh.
They take it, they recycle it.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see.
We think, I don't know.
Yeah.
They have no, they have no facility that accepts it as that type of waste or whatever they do take, they're just in trash bags or whatever.
Oh, I see, so they just take it and it's not, okay.
And there's a few things that when, when coastal comes online, that's the, the new word for fiberite is now coastal, and that comes online. They're not going to want the clothing and textiles that we all just put in the trash. And they're working on a solution for that, there's a vendor that actually will put bins in communities and you just have to, you know, educate people to put the clothing in either, you know, a thrift store or whatever, or these bins. But they have kind of a, a list of things, you know, changes, no matter where you go, we'll have to all acclimate to, you know, textiles out of there and hazardous waste out of that waste stream. Perk was fine, we'll take the tires once in a while, they don't want any tires, you know, so we'll all have a little bit of a, a learning curve on, passing that on to our residents on how to, you know, adjust.
No more furniture in the trash, no more vinyl siding, no more hoses, ropes.
And does coastal take, is your depository, where you then bring, is that, is that what we're talking about? If you, coastal takes what I bring to you?
Right.
Coastal takes from you?
Coastal be the new perk. So everything, everything went to Warrington.
Oh.
It was supposed to go to Hampden as of a year ago. It wasn't online, so we're in the interim facilities, so basically different facilities go to different landfills right now. We're actually, anything that you bring Dover's, it's gonna go in the Nordwalk as an interim. Everything's gonna come online, April, May and June, those three months of year up to 100%. They'll take everything in Hampden, but they'll take it with the caveats of, you know, okay, you gotta pull textiles out, you gotta pull tires out, you gotta pull various things out, and they're working with us so it's not gonna just be, you know, the burden on us. Ultimately it is, but they do have a vendor that wants the clothing and, you know, and, um, so, you know, we'll, we'll get through it.
Mm-hmm. I do anticipate that that, moving on to that, that will be, the cost is going to be passed on to the towns?
Well, I mean, if I, Coastal's approach is, you know, try to make it cost neutral. I think where the bins are, you just delete the bins and take the bins, you know, so, um, I, I'm not ready to say it's gonna be a huge cost, it's just gonna be handled differently and trying to get some things separated from the waste stream, you know, initially, so it's just coming and separated. So we're not really ready to say that, you know, this is an actual added cost yet, but it's just, you know, some differences.
I don't know historically, but are, what we've been paying Dover for the last three years, has it gone incrementally up? Do we know that?
It's hovered right about the same, right around 50 to 52,000. This last quarter, our semester was a little bit more because they did the pesticides and stuff that they had been holding for five or six years.
There's two.
Two years.
Two years, yeah. 2016, we sent a whole bunch out, then 17, I hardly get any. Supposed to send it every year, but it costs a thousand dollars, just won't come up. So we, we didn't do it, 2017, and last year was unloaded right now. And I got four, five shelves full of pesticides and acids and flammable and some...
So, so we haven't had big increments of, of increasing cost necessarily?
No.
No? I didn't look.
You won't get, you won't get the recycling services over there you do with us either. You have to, they have to, you recycle your own over there. You can't just drop it off at the window.
Right.
With us.
Right.
We sort it for you. People have to sort their own.
Yeah.
Right.
I did go visit him today.
He did?
I have not, I want to, but I have not been to Dexter.
Well, I went to Dover and I just drove in and around, I talked to the guy at the window, and I'm like, I don't know, so I called Chris. How does it work? But then when I went into Dexter, um, they, they do, it's all open and it's labeled, and then you, it's a self-serve, you put your own recyclables in, so...
So you have to sort it all yourself.
And it's mandatory in Dexter, they've got a sign there, mandatory recycle.
It is, here's a...
Yeah, you know where it is also.
We don't have really trash police, you know, running over the threshold of, technically we want everybody to recycle them.
Yeah.
For the most part, people do a good job.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, it's, it's a significant difference in price.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, we, we don't, we're tiny little town, we, $10,000 buckets of money are pretty rare, so...
Right.
Uh, and I would think that at a minimum, we, we've got, we've gotta wait 365 days before we can even avail ourselves of this savings, so...
Right, right.
My feeling is to get the clock ticking.
Right. I agree.
So essentially, we would make a motion to give notice.
Yes.
And then next year at this time, if nothing's changed, we could at least take advantage of what is the current situation.
Right.
If it remains that way.
Mm-hmm.
So that, I would make a motion that we give notice to terminate or suspend our agreement with the facility in Dover.
And, and that, oh, we'll have discussion after.
Yep.
So I'll second that.
Yeah, discuss away.
No, so, so just so I'm clear, um, we have to give a year's notice? And that doesn't mean that when we revisit this a year from now, that we can't say we'd like to stay with Dover?
Well, for example, if Dover came to us in June and said, you know, if you wanted to rescind your notice, we would give you a savings of X.
Right.
We, I, I would think we'd be within our jurisdiction to discuss it.
Okay. I think that's fair.
But we can't really do anything.
Right.
Right now, because we have an agreement that, we have a financial obligation that won't disappear for a year.
Right. Right.
So...
And we have to, I mean...
There's not enough savings to pay that and start the new one.
No, no, no. No. Okay, so, yes?
Any further discussion? You wanna vote on, on that motion? In favor? See you then.
Thank you for coming.
No problem.
We appreciate it.
If you'd ever like us to come back with more questions or, you know, more discussion, we're happy to. Probably long overdue since we've been here, and we're happy to come back, so...
Yep.
You know, we'll provide whatever information's gonna be helpful to you, and, uh, you know, we're always looking for savings, obviously, you know, we'll look for some more, but, you know, we, we'd like to get it down a lot more than we've ever been able to. Appreciate you.
Well, good, I appreciate it.
Giving us a chance to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Moving on to item five, motion, uh, open session, excuse me. Would anybody like to speak right now? No?
On the motion you just did, I would, you know, just clarify with Dexter, they will take everything that Dover currently is taking in the form they're taking it. You know, cause I'm concerned about all the egg plastics and this and that, and it's never been an issue, and I know Dexter did have different rules and standards for that, and, and it would be quite a, quite a burden.
I'm guessing that you guys probably know people in situations similar to your own that are using the Dexter facility.
Right.
I mean, Dicky, for example.
Yeah.
Uh, what's his experience, do you have an idea?
Well, I was thinking more of the Fogle Farm in Exeter.
Yep.
They said they, they could not dispose of that.
Okay.
Without cutting it into like three foot by three foot strips and, you know, you, you know, um, but in Dover, we just fill a cattle trailer full and call them ahead of time, hey, we got this coming in, you know, so we can go into the bay, they're not using, and just unload everything, and it doesn't mess them up with their, the traffic and the people, but, you know, it just, to make sure that they will take what Dover currently takes.
Sure.
Well, I think really that's what the next year is gonna be about.
Right.
Right.
Educating, educating ourselves.
Right, because all this is doing is starting the clock.
Right, no, no, I understand that, but, but, you know...
And let Dover know to sharpen their pencil? If they wanna, right? Put them on notice.
And I was thinking that honestly, that right there, you know what you was just saying, I was kinda really that back as a homeowner. If I take the carpet out of my living room tonight?
Uh-huh.
And I go to Dover, we have to cut that into a three foot by three foot?
Right, right.
I think we do have to, and Dexter as well, will I run that?
So I mean, what you're saying is kinda that same...
Yeah, but see, currently in Dover, you don't have to, don't have to do that.
You just roll that stuff up and just...
Whatever comes. See, another thing, you know, with that net wrap that is currently being, you know, that, some places, that's an issue too.
For the roundbells?
It's just such a significant change.
Go ahead, Chris.
Oh, yes.
Biggest issue I see with either facility is the additional charges for other items that most people are just gonna throw in the garbage and not pay the charge.
Correct. Yeah, no, and when you go to...
Until that, that aspect gets under control or take, you know, some sort of other...
That's universal, though. Since those bags, bags are not clear, and when you go up there, they're backing their pickup truck in, it's bag, bag, bag.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but that's a both place.
It's all on us, I'm saying on these facilities.
New board's the same way, I was there for a while.
You know, if you want people to participate, you gotta stop surcharging them so much.
Well, that's, yeah, that's...
Oh, it's too late, they're gonna surcharge you and surcharge you as an individual, or they're gonna take all of that that they're charging people and charge it back to the towns. They're gonna get the money, it doesn't really, at the end of the day, it costs X amount of money for them to, to do this, so... That's how we'll end up being there.
And I'm, and I'm sure the Bolsters truck, he, he's just picking up five solid green bags and he throws them in the back of the truck. Nobody's opening those bags to make sure that you're in compliance.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the reality of it, but that's true with everybody.
When Bolsters takes your trash, do you have a separate thing of recycling that he takes?
No.
No?
No.
We just, we just...
We break out cardboard, cardboard separate.
But not number two plastic or number three?
No, no, no.
Oh.
I have a dumpster and that, all, everything into a dumpster.
We, we pull returnables out separately, and it's like a tip.
He takes it to the back.
Yeah, we don't, what we don't give to you.
Huh. Yeah, okay, well, I guess, you know, we, I used to live in Dover, and, um, of course, my kids went through the school district, so then they, they came in and taught all the kids how to recycle, which, you know, so then you encourage the kids to, so I've just been recycling ever, you know, I've always recycled.
I've seen the Dexter facility at work, and there seem to be plenty of people buzzing around the recycling bins, they're using them, so some people aren't participating.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think Chris is probably right, a good percentage are not.
Well, it's no different, I mean, that's why you see an occasional refrigerator laying beside the road.
Yep.
Or on back streets. People need to get rid of it, and if they don't have it...
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, it's, yeah...
Anything, uh, further for open session? All right, uh, moving on to selectmen's concerns.
Oh, wait a minute. Yep. Want to do my email now?
Your email?
Yeah, everybody email we are.
Oh, yes!
I'll find it, 'cause I wanna make sure I word it right.
You're gonna read it?
Well, I don't care about reading it verbatim, I just wanna make sure I remember it correctly. Uh, so, yes, I did get an email that was regarding our last meeting, and we, about the icy roads conditions and about sanding, um... Basically, it's referencing where I took the class and stated how sanding in those conditions doesn't make it any safer, how it's more of a mental and not really a benefit. So what I was referencing, I'm taking, she's taking it kind of out of context of how, maybe I didn't verbiage it right, but when it's freezing rain, pouring like it was, and weak sand, and the salt, sand gets buried into the freezing rain, you drive on it, you see sand, but if you touch it, it's all ice because it's under the layer of the ice, it's not on the top. So, in that DOT class, that's where they talked about that, and talked about difference between sanding and timeframes, and for an event like that, you should sand prior to the storm. So that way there, once it's done and the temperature starts to come up, they go down through and literally the salt works in the bottom and peels the ice off.
Yes.
Which is...
Which is what it did.
Just exactly how that entire storm happened.
Wow, yeah.
Once it was done, they come down through and they peel that all right up, so I just wanna clarify, I'm not sure if, if I didn't communicate it right, or who's just taking it wrong, but whatever.
That's the way I understood it when you explained it at our last meeting.
Correct.
I'll jump on his bandwagon, consider it's the roads, um, I did get some good reports, um, the last week or two, so... The first one was on the West Road, Mr. Hughes, I think they lived there a year round, he said he was really impressed that whoever's doing the plow and is winging it back, it's good and wide, it's clear, it's sanded, so he was very happy with the West Road. I talked to Peter DeSardans, and he said Barrett's doing the French Mill Road now. He says he's doing a terrific job, he says he is impressed with the job that he can do with that little truck, and, and again, it's, it's winged back, it's clear, it's great. And Paul Crotto called about the brush cutting that we did on French Mills and the limb cutting, and he said he's very glad we did that, he appreciates that we did that, he feels a lot safer, especially the limbs that were coming out over the road, and he, you know, we had a little discussion like we did about, you know, we need to perfect it, but, but he was appreciative that we had taken the time to do that, and, and he was glad that that happened, so, some good, good reports.
That's good.
Good to see the scale go the other way.
Yeah.
It's funny how the scale tips so bad one direction to the other. It is...
Well, and, and the thing on the ice and the sand is your dirt roads are gonna get the ice first on a sand when it's raining, freezing rain, and I have had, I don't know if it's the same person on Chapman Corner, because it comes down onto 23, I've had several calls on that that, you know, it's slippery when they come down and they slide out into 23, so, but I usually text Chris or Warren or both, and they usually take care of it, so...
And scare fire is out.
I, yeah, I was just gonna bring that up, I don't know if you have got any calls about that, but when I went home last night, you could definitely see that, that worked. They went down through Silver's Mills and peeled a lot of ice up yesterday.
They're gonna, they're gonna do it all, I mean, we're, we're, so...
Yep. I honestly didn't realize how bad my driveway was till he did that. I had a limp like that, it's like Ivan Slack did my driveway after, so I spent quite a bit of time scraping it.
I think the operator said he did the first side, brought that over, then he backed up and got the rest of it too, just to get it all in near driveway.
He did. Literally, I, I was very close to putting my Jeep four-wheel drive in my driveway last night. That's...
They just wanted to make sure you noticed, so...
Yeah, I did. Yep.
Okay, any, anything else? Committee reports?
Um, the only thing that I have is I received an email from the Gadequins Chamber of Commerce about their 2019 guidebook and event calendar. And so I submitted, I talked to Jason and Jimmy and submitted their concert series to be included in that, so maybe we'll see a little more attendance this summer. Um, and I also, we did the winter family day, I told them pick a day and let's shoot for that one, so that they'll all be included.
Great, so that's great.
That's all.
Okay. Backing up, I guess, to selectmen's concerns, I noticed, you, I have this, but...
Oh, what?
Yeah, sorry, I kinda took that out of shot tonight.
Yes, um...
Did, did each of you get one of those?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I'm thinking it might be, uh, nice to put the PDF version on the town website.
That was my plan, but I wanted to make sure that the two recipients in the front received a copy before I did that.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
Um, and George is gonna drop one off either tonight or tomorrow, and I'm gonna call the other one, so hopefully, tomorrow or Friday, and then I'll post it as soon as both of those people have, have a call.
Good. Cool. It looks nice.
Yeah, it does.
Yep.
I really like that picture.
I've got a big 16 by 20 in the office.
Who, you don't know who took it?
I don't remember the guy's name, I mean, you can see the credit and...
I saw that, the gentleman that brought the photo in from...
It's a big 16 by 20, but I actually took a picture of just a little portion of it with my cellphone.
And that's a...
And that's the cellphone picture.
It looks pretty good.
It's a picture of a picture.
Wow.
So...
Was he up on a cell ta, a cell tower taking this picture?
I don't know.
It almost looks...
Could've been a drone.
Could've been a, I think it was a drone, I think it was a drone, now that you say that.
Oh, there you go.
They take very high-resolution photographs.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
I'm gonna get a, if I can ever remember, a 16 by 20 frame and just frame it and keep it in the office, so...
Nice.
I just keep forgetting.
You can see my barn in that picture.
Thank you, really.
Yeah.
Uh, so no, no, no more committee reports.
Yeah.
Uh, onto new business. Uh, so no, no, more committee reports, uh, on to new business, um, personnel policy. Now, I guess, yeah, it's only five, sorry, you got, you got plenty of time, I think, to, um, and it, this goes back actually, this was, uh, the catalyst for this was back to the budget meeting that Jody and I attended.
One of, yeah, one of, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, that, that, I just, that's the background I missed, so.
I wanted to visit, um, or we wanted to visit the, um, sort of compensa- not sort of, the compensation and whether there was compensation, um, addressed in the personnel policy. As far as a structure for compensation and for raises and, and, um.
Well, what struck us was, um, you were having a conversation with the budget committee and, uh, you expressed the desire to have enough budgeted so that you could, uh, provide a raise, which, it just kinda struck, I think, well, like, the way we've got this set up, um, it's, it, well, for example, you might have an employee that just came on board. In order to get them their raise, uh, it needs to be in the budget. But you might not be prepared to actually know whether they're gonna get a raise or not. Um, and so that we're, we were just, maybe there's a way to provide some structure, like, for example, maybe, you get a cost of living raise after a year, we, and we could, we'll just use a number, two percent. That you, that is part of the policy, so that you, the, everybody knows that on the anniversary of your employment, uh, as long as you've met expectations, it would be at the town manager's discretion, you would be eligible for up to, and we'll just say two percent.
Right, right. And, 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 and what I did was, I actually did, I just ran some numbers, just so that, because for me, when we talk about two percent, yeah, I mean, I can figure it out and stuff, but for me to have the numbers in front of me so we can visualize with regard to budget, what we're talking about. So, if you don't mind, I, um, I did this for all of us. Um, and, and only because how it impacts the budget, so I, um, the first page, and I just went with an eleven dollar an hour, so minimum, which is minimum wage, correct Lois? Is that correct? Um, eleven dollars an hour, forty hours a week, so this first page is, is a model of, let's say we did, and I don't, when, when we do raises, do we do, do we do it by dollar or by percentage? I don't know, I don't know. So, and right now, so this model, this first model is, is a raise of one dollar, so from, if we did an hourly wage of eleven and we gave them a dollar, which, um, the annual pay for that employee would be two thousand eight eighty dollars. Increase, so, you know, with regard to budget, we have two budget committee members here, you know, this, these are things that, so, so, the second page, which actually you can extrapolate from the first page, um, is a fifty cent raise. Um, same thing, eleven dollar employee now getting fifty cents, that impacts our budget by a thousand dollars, thousand dollars, thousand forty. The, the last model I did is same thing, eleven dollar an hour, um, employee getting a two percent raise, which was something that, we, you know, um, like a cost of liv- living raise, so that we knew that each employee would be getting a perc- or, uh, if, we did do that type of thing, um, so, and that comes out to four hundred and fifty-seven dollars a year. Um, so, and so it, for me, you know, again, I can sit here and talk about, about, um, a dollar raise and things like that, but to see really how much it ends up adding up to, um, is significant. Um, so, I was, sorry, go ahead.
It's, yeah, it is significant, if you had a fifteen dollar an hour employee, and you said, we're gonna give you a two percent raise, that sounds like pennies, but it's really close to a thousand bucks.
Right, right.
So, that's like a, that's like a renting a camp on Wauske for a week. If you were, if you were making fifteen dollars, you're probably pleased to get a thousand dollar raise. But when you say two percent, it doesn't sound like you're getting a thousand.
Right, well, and the thing that I found interesting, and again, like, you know, you can do it in your head and, you know, pretty well. Um, but the thing that I found interesting, for an eleven dollar an hour employee, a minimum wage employee, and I, a starting out employee, if you give him a dollar raise, it's nine point nine oh nine percent, which, that's significant.
Yeah, well, it's not typical raise.
Right.
Normally, I, I-
Right.
The, the, at my office, typically, uh, it's a two to three percent raise.
Right.
I, I don't, you've had three or four.
Right, and that's, see, that's when we sort of looked at each other and thought, whoa, you know, if we, how, how does that impact the budget? And how do we-
It's two percent this year, then that two percent, there's another two percent next year, I mean, you, you take over ten years and you start compounding that.
But so is the price of gas and the price of groceries, I mean, everything gets taken into account. I mean, yes, you're, I mean, your income should take into account inflation as well, and that's why they call it a cost of living adjustment.
And that's why I'm wondering if we wanna consider basically hardwiring that into the-
Well, and it's, it's different, it's different every year. I mean, this year, I think this, the federal government put out a two point eight percent was their suggested COLA. Um, I know in the past it's been over three, it's been less than two, it's been one, uh, you know, it just depends.
So, if there's every year-
As just the, you know, calculated COLA. I mean, rather than say this percentage, say whatever the COLA is, and people is looking up online. Um, and typically, when you, when the raises, once they're higher, it kind of like, it falls into town meeting. Historically, in the majority of towns that I am familiar with, once town meeting is done and, and those budget dollars have been approved, that raise technically takes effect. And I've had that confirmed with MMA too, even though when I was in Bradford, I was contract, but I had a written raise into that line item. And when the townspeople vote to approve that, they're basically saying, you need to spend that in that manner, so, you get the raise after town meeting as long as it's approved.
I would argue that, just because an item is budgeted, doesn't mean we wanna spend it all.
But that's not up to you, that's why you take it to town meeting, it's the legislative body that has decided that those are how those dollars are going to be spent.
Correct, you can spend up to this amount.
Correct.
Doesn't mean you have to spend all of that amount. You're allowed to spend up to that amount. Is how I view them.
Well, the way they worded it was, you're being directed that that's how you should spend that money. So, if that line item is sixty thousand, then you should spend sixty thousand, which means those raises should take into effect at town meeting.
So, what he's saying is that if, and if the employee doesn't deserve the raise, that because the town approved, that you have to give it to them anyway?
Well, and that's a good question, um, I would say, 'cause we do have the personnel policy as long as their reviews are good. But if their reviews are good, then, or if their reviews aren't good, then why am I gonna write them in a raise?
It just seems like, um, we're, once you, uh, you probably legally can take money back, but it never happens. Uh, so, when you commit to a, you know, we'll say, a dollar fifty raise, which is, might translate into thirteen and a half percent, that's forever.
Yes.
And, and then you quickly, the next year, you want at least a cost of living raise on that. Uh, so, I just, I question as to whether, just because that, there's a bucket of money that's budgeted this year, that that gives us license to spend off into infinity based on that bucket of money this year. Uh, and I guess that's kinda where I, I look at if we could provide some struc- now, it's not like we have a hundred employees. But, in some ways, it's, almost makes it more complicated, it's, it would, if we, if you had a structure, whether it's maybe the actual calculated rate of inflation, or two percent, some years inflation's flat, some years it's three. But if, if, if you knew that it was two, that's in the budget, but you still have the, the, and this would be with any town manager, you still would have the authority or wherewithal to approach the board, the, the, uh, the budget committee and say, I have, I have some raises in mind that exceed the normal parameters and here's what it's gonna cost. Now, nobody has a right to know who's gonna get what, that's nobody's business but yours. But at that point, so we'll just pick a number, you say, beyond the, the two percent, I need an additional two thousand dollars for, for raises that I am anticipating. Now, you haven't gone to an employee yet and promised anything, which is another thing I really want to avoid, because that's just not fun. You, you, you say something, I'm gonna try to get this, and then the budget committee says thumbs down, and the select board says thumbs down, and that's not. I would rather have it work the other way around. That's my thought.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's the kind of end game that, I think, now, maybe we can't get there, but that's just some structure. Doesn't mean that you, you've lost any latitude. Uh, but then you won't ever be thinking that you're gonna give a raise that you can't give because you'd have to get, you'd gotta get approval for the amount of money first. Then it still doesn't mean you have to spend it. You could get the approval, and who knows what happens, between now and review time? You may decide, you know what, I really don't think I am gonna get this raise, I don't know, I mean, some hypothetical where you're not as pleased as you thought you were gonna be, but you, you don't have to get it.
I'm thinking too, I mean, like last year, you had, can't remember what it was, it was a, was it a training or something? Where you had to bring in somebody else for that one week or?
Couple of days.
Couple of days, you know what I mean, so maybe, you got situations like that too, so, as far as to get rid of the bucket, I can see where you don't really wanna get rid of the bucket, 'cause you should have something there for a slush, whether it's for stuff like that, or an emergency situation, or, or whatever, where, you know, you may need to bring in other people, but. I know with us, I mean, ours, everything in our company and, and most companies, it's tiered. Once you get to that, the only thing that's structured is your tier. There is no structure for cost of living. Cost of living solely falls under EBITDA. You don't hit EBITDA.
What's that?
You either make money as a company, you might get a raise, or you don't make money as a company and you're not getting earnings.
I see, so everybody is, is in-
Right, there's, you don't know until the end. Um, I can, thirty years ago, we used to get four percent every year. Fifteen years ago, that started going every year, every two years. Ten years ago, that kinda stopped, and I think we went about eight years and never got one. Then we got a three, and I think we're four or five years, four years probably since the last one, right now, so.
And it depends on profitability of the company.
Sure, I mean, if, if you're not making money, you can't afford that level of, because it does compound, I mean.
Sure.
So, and, I, I wasn't there at the, this time, but, and, but in past budget meetings, I did ask Rick as far as over here, how they worked and he, uh, we can't always, it's not always guaranteed a certain amount, or we've had to skip some years, or some years aren't as good as others, and, so it's kinda that same, you know, in the business end of it, that's kinda how it works.
So, it does matter what cost of inflation is and, and what cost of living? I mean, is, is cost of living and cost of inflation, are those-
I think they're synonymous.
synonymous, okay, I wasn't sure. Um, so, uh, they don't care in those companies, those two companies that we're talking in particularly.
Well, it's not a matter of caring, it's a matter of, you've got X amount of money, you got X amount of people.
Right.
If I, if I can't make any money where I'm at, I can't afford to give four percent more.
Right.
Or I, or I don't think there's enough extra there to give the four percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's the other piece.
No, and it wouldn't, there's, this policy, if, if we set it up for three, that doesn't mean that you couldn't come in and change it, just like we're contemplating changing it now.
Yeah, it's a-
I mean, if times really got tough and, I guess we're gonna have to suspend COLAs for a while, unfortunately, because we're gonna mill rate of thirty. I mean, I, you, God forbid, I mean, that's, you still could change it. I'm just wondering, that, we're just, I'm just thinking structure.
Right, and right now, there's nothing in here with, there's no structure for, for, no, but typically, it's the COLA.
Right. I asked for a little more for the other two ladies, but, um, for mine, I just calculated, I calculated a three percent. But I can do two point eight, I can do two, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Well, and actually, according, if I'm remembering correctly, a contracted employee's really not a part of this.
Tip, I have received the regular raises because it's a COLA.
Right.
In the other towns that I've worked in. At town meeting, my raise went in and it didn't matter if I had a contract or not.
And then on from town meeting, you're paid the new price, okay, so that's-
And that's historically how it has been here.
Okay. So, the question is whether we do, I mean, I know you said that it's not typical to be in a, in a, in a personnel policy.
Right.
Typically, there's structure in a policy. Maybe not at the town level, but usually there's, there's structure about pay, of when you're gonna get it. You know, are you gonna get it from your date of employment, are you gonna get it off town meeting? That's one of the two questions. And I think, I think for you and honestly for the employees, it'd be kinda nice to know, hey, look at that, they're planning on get, I'm planning on, if I do my job right, I two, I should be looking at a two or a three percent. And that would give them the knowing of that. And I think it would be easier for the budget committee, or budgetary, you would know. I mean, you could actually sit down, do that, figure it out, so you knew that.
So, for our employees, um, um, is it always been a dollar amount or a percentage?
That historically, I cannot tell you.
Okay.
Um, I'm guessing it's been a dollar amount, not a percentage, because it's always been an equal dollar, not like fifty-six cents or-
Right.
It's a, you know, it's a dollar or twenty-five cents or fifty cents, seventy-five cents.
Right, it's, it's-
We have had instances in the past where-
Recent past.
Uh, because here's what can, could happen. If you've got this, you've got this money, like I said, it's been budgeted, and, uh, your town manager just decides, I'm gonna give you a five dollar an hour raise. Now, like I said, it's very hard to go backwards. And once the town manager commits the town to that,
Yeah.
then he shows up at next year's budget meeting and says, here's the new budget, what happened? Well, I, I gave him raises.
Yeah.
And I, I kinda wanna be able to avoid that. Again, not meddling in the personnel per se, but if you've got, uh, if, if any of my town managers today and going forward want to give an increase, it seems like the board should be aware of this long-term commitment.
Well, you already have that in there, it says with the agreement of the board. Additional performance-based compensation may be allocated at the discretion of the town manager with the approval of the select board, you had already added that.
Yeah, with the, but I think we need pre-approval.
Well, that's what you do with the budget committee, that's your pre-approval.
Right, but if the perception is that I, as long as I have the money, I essentially have the approval, then I, I question that.
Yeah, but when you go through the budget process and you look at that budget and we vote on it and you vote on it, that's when we're-
Okay, that's your approval or not.
That's what I thought you were saying. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we intended to approve that for the next twenty-two years. Is that what I'm saying?
Let's just look at a different one, okay? Let's just say, you need X amount of money, what you're planning for next year, but you put a five thousand dollar, just in case factor in there, or a two thousand dollar.
Well, you don't know me very well, I don't like that.
Just saying, but it gets close to the end of the year and we got extra money and somebody gets a raise. We approve the budget for one reason, but it's still in the bucket and it got used, it's still in there, we don't have a line item. I can just see where we oughta have something. 'Cause I know in the past, some of these were, couple of years ago, pushing twenty percent. And higher.
Yes, go ahead.
And actually, this is written for approval at town meeting.
Which number are you on?
Where I work, we get a, only a percentage. And if, if we have been, had a successful year, we get a bonus. We do not get a dollar increase, it's a set-
I was gonna ask about bonuses.
And it doesn't change the salary other than that percentage.
Sure, sure, you can't do that unless you have a line item for bonuses, it's against the law, when you're in municipal government, you cannot do bonuses.
But you don't have to spend it, but you can break it out that way, that's what we do.
Well, I just, my-
Okay, that's, I was just gonna ask about a bonus.
Is long-term.
Right, right, that's exactly right, that's, um-
'Cause we did have a, Peter, this was not you, this was prior to you, we had a, a single year where, uh, increases exceeded twenty percent. And that, and that, it was said then, okay, that, that amount of money, though, it was significant, what you really committed- what you really committed us to was years of that amount of money. I, I just, that doesn't seem, there really isn't anything else that we do that works that way.
Yeah, but you don't get to set that rate of pay when you hire somebody, either. I mean, that's still.
Well, I guess, I guess in theory, we do. I mean, if you said to us.
Well, you can't exceed the budget.
Right, right.
Right, right.
I've found someone great, they're two hundred thousand dollars a year. Well, we're going to pass.
Right, right.
Yeah, Matt?
Maybe instead of cap on the bottom, we should just cap the top, and, so you can just set like a limit. You can only give up to X amount, instead of having a bottom, the bottom there.
The two, the two percent, or three percent, or whatever you want to use, that would be the cap without additional approval.
Right, right.
If you had a special, maybe you've had somebody who's going to take on a boatload more responsibility, and now you, you want to compensate it for that. That would be a one-off. You'd come to the board and say, I've got a situation, it's going to cost this, and the board would say, okay, or no, they would, but you would know. But the base, and she wouldn't have to award it all, so, you might, you might have a situation where you say, you know, I'm not even going to give you the cost of living. I, I, I don't think that would ever happen currently, but it could happen.
Depends.
Yeah.
On the situation.
Like, if you have it in the policy that there's going to be something, you don't give out anything, you may be setting yourself up for issues.
Well, you could have up to.
Well, it's always at the discretion, I mean.
Yeah. But we, right now, it's not addressed, and I'm not saying we have the language tonight, I mean, it's something we should talk about.
No, 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 but just. Yeah.
And I would definitely want your input on how this would work. Because I really actually, I think it could be better for you in running the office if we've got.
Structure.
Structure.
Do we, is there one more year where they're increasing minimum wage? Or is this the last one?
One more.
One more? Next year?
January one, twelve bucks.
Twelve bucks. See, how many other stores go out, how many more kiosks come out?
So it goes from eleven to twelve?
To twelve, one more year, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. That's nine percent.
Yeah.
There's a dollar difference in the price of a candy bar between here and Virginia.
You're kidding.
I am not kidding. The same candy bar that I get for two ninety-nine. Every week, it's good shaws, was under a dollar ninety in Virginia. The exact same special dark with almond Hershey's.
Yeah, but the date on that one was twenty twelve.
No, actually, the, the product was fresher.
Closer to Hershey's.
That's, I just think it would be a good thing to discuss.
Yeah, I just.
And I only, when we saw it, I could say, okay, we could get tripped up here.
Whoa, yeah, it just sort of, it just.
Well, and I, I didn't go to the budget meeting this year, but I can tell you, before I was sitting here, when I was sitting at the table on the budget committee for a couple of years, this conversation always comes up. No, you can't discuss individuals, but what's that come out to? What's the percentage? Is it this, is it that? Well, if we can come up with a number, and it's structured, I just think it would be better for everybody. I think it would be better, easier, better for you, it would be better in there.
Right.
It would be better for the committee, it would, everybody would have a better, would know what's coming.
Right.
Or know the most that's coming.
Yeah.
Well, you'd have some parameters, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Work with that.
Right.
And our employees are, or your, are hourly, or salaried?
Hourly, hourly. I'm salaried, they're hourly.
Yeah, okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And, and are they both full-time? I mean, forty hours.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like the concept, I liked it. You guys want to figure out some verbiage, that would be the, that would be the harder part, I think.
Yeah, I think it's going to go right into section ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just a matter of how you word it, so it, it's everywhere, so it comes out right, that's.
It's, I remember, you, I think you were on the budget committee at the time, and it was suggested, this particular town manager was going for a lump sum amount of money. And he scoffed at the percentage, and he said, that's like twenty-two cents. What's he going to do with twenty-two cents? And it's just interesting, when you, that's almost five hundred bucks.
That's, and that's why I did this, because, you know, you can talk about, and you can, but if you see the numbers, it really is.
It would be nice to just say to the person, we're going to give you a five hundred dollar raise.
Yeah, exactly, you know.
But when you say twenty-two cents, it doesn't sound like much.
Sounds like a pittance, but it does add up, and when you see these numbers.
I would bend over, pick up four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Absolutely.
When you cost, when you cost a living one at six hundred, you only get four fifty-seven, you're not going to be very happy.
Well, you'd be happier than the guy who didn't even get the four fifty-seven.
That's right.
Exactly, yeah, right.
None of it's required.
That's, that's it?
Yeah, so, and, and the town hysterically has always been pretty fair. I know you run the numbers, like, you know, you can see what the average assistant clerk gets paid, you can see that, it's.
It's public, yeah.
Yeah, and we've always been, I mean, we're not the highest, but we're not the lowest.
We're above average, every time I run.
I don't know what we were like ten years ago, but, I mean, it's, and that's not.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying.
And we don't get a lot of pushback from the community, and this, I, this board has never felt that way. I just want structure.
Right.
And, so, we'll work on some language, and house it around. We're going to get right where we need to be at about the right time, aren't we?
Yeah, actually, one of the things. Oh, no, really?
Okay. We're on nine, correspondence?
B and B audit, I had, they, every sorfer, they check, especially with an agent change. They come in and just inventory what we've got, take out what we don't need, and tell us. So we did get a, an audit, they came in a week or two ago, and they said, you do a rate if you want to see it. You have a CC copy, but if you want it, I filed it, but it's, it's available if you want to see it, so. No, it was all good. Our processes are good, we.
That's good.
Move to item ten, okay?
Yeah, I think we just want a motion to sign the town warrant.
Okay.
And I know we've approved it, but let's have a motion to sign it.
So I'll make a motion to sign the town warrant, flush the.
As it's, as written.
As written.
Any further discussion? No, but we'll vote. We're all in favor of signing the warrant.
Okay.
Is it here?
Because you've already signed it, it's in that study.
Oh, okay, I see, all right, thank you.
I'll act as my stuff, and that is everything.
So we need to adjourn.
Make one. Do we need an executive session?
A nile?
No, so we're done.
Okay.
So I'll make.
So we will adjourn.
Adjourn.
Yeah, yes. Any, any further discussion on that? No, we are voting, we are adjourned. And we might as well leave this tape running, because we're about to.
Well, do you want to pause it, so go?
Yeah, we got just a few minutes, so we'll pause the tape. Okay, it is February sixth, twenty nineteen, six o'clock, and we are going to begin our public hearing regarding the marijuana ordinance scheduled for the town warrant. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start, I guess, with the presentation of the ordinance. Does, does there enough, everybody have a copy of this?
For the attorneys, no, I do have.
I, I have several, only because we've gotten some over the night work.
Okay.
So, as long as they're all sane. Yeah, here's another attorney, oh, actually, let me have a, I'll keep that one with the highlights, and you can hear that one. And I have another one.
No, I don't, I don't, I have a copy of that one, but I don't have a copy of the MMA opinion.
This is not an MMA opinion, it's the actual town attorney.
I thought there was two opinions here, and it was just this one, I have a copy of that.
Anybody need the ordinance?
I think what we got from MMA was, talk to the town attorney.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, that was there.
Like I said, I didn't see that, that one, I just, I saw this, and I have a copy of that. Is this what's in the warrant?
The ordinance itself, the attorney's opinion is not in the warrant.
Oh, okay. Do you need the ordinance? What's in the?
Article two is at the bottom, that's what's going to be on the warrant.
Does anybody else need?
At town meeting. The page, the bottom of page one. Does it make one of us read this article, as it's going to be?
It's up to you, if you want to read the whole thing, I mean, that's a lot to read.
No, I, I just, I guess everybody has a copy, but you could read the bottom of page one, article, as it says, article two, that's what you're going to see on the town warrant, when we have town meeting February twenty-first. And the purpose of this hearing, I guess, is to try to answer any questions that anybody might have regarding this.
I don't have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, or statements, or? This is pretty freewheeling, these hearings, you get to say whatever you want to say, pretty much.
So in the attorney's opinion, I will tell you, it says, the fifth paragraph of the ordinance is the, is really the technical part of the ordinance, because the first part is definitions and, and things like that. So section five is the severability part of the ordinance. And I can read that. The provisions of this ordinance are severable if any court or competent jurisdiction decides that any section, clause, sentence, part, or provision of this ordinance is illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional. Such decision shall not affect, impair, or invalidate any of the remaining sections, clauses, sentences, parts, or provisions of the ordinance. The town of Sangerville hereby declares that in the event of such a decision, the determination, the court's ruling, that the court's ruling is legitimate, it would have enacted this ordinance even without the section, clause, sentence, part, or provision that the court decides is illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional, that's. Oh, the fifth paragraph, sorry.
Starting from the top?
Yeah.
Therefore, we, the people of Sangerville?
Yes, that's, ah, yes.
That's the one the attorney did.
That's the one. Therefore, we, the people of Sangerville, do hereby adopt this ordinance whereby the town of Sangerville does allow marijuana establishments within the town, intends to regulate and permit such businesses, and orders town government to initiate the process of drafting rules to regulate such businesses. So that's the paragraph.
What do you intend to, you want it done first?
That says, we, we should have rules and regulations. So that's why when we do the article, you'll see in italics underneath the, the article itself, it said, it says a yes vote is, will mean this, and a no vote will mean that. So that's, that's that paragraph there.
So a yes vote is actually going to mean, you're going to approve the ordinance, but only following the appropriate town regulation?
Correct.
Correct.
A yes vote will authorize us to opt-in, because you have to opt-in to marijuana sales for recreational and medical now. I mean, if we don't have an ordinance, then we don't have marijuana sales allowed in town. So the only way you can do is an opt-in. So a yes vote will allow the opt-in to allow adult-use marijuana establishments to operate in the town of Sangerville, subject to the condition that the voters of Sangerville subsequently vote to enact an ordinance, providing for the rules to regulate and permit such businesses. A no vote will mean adult-use marijuana facilities are not permitted in Sangerville. And it's only for adult use, this ordinance does not cover medical marijuana.
Anything? All right, I don't, I don't have anything further on this, either of you?
No.
Lois?
I don't.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I make the motion that we, oh, you made the motion, oh, yes.
I make a motion that we adjourn our public hearing.
He doesn't.
Those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.